All right, I'd like to welcome everybody here and appreciate y'all taking the time to come out on this another rainy day. Wish we were getting plenty of it, but before we get started, I'd like everybody to stand. I'm glad you're ready and I'm pleased to leave. If you hit my father again, thank you for another day to give us your Lord to come out and take care of county business, dear Lord, and just pray to just be with us, give us good little guidance. Just help us make decisions that will benefit us all the citizens of the county and good Lord, just help us and direct us in our path that you have us in God, again, just thank over this county and just pray to just bless us to move into your name, amen.
Thank you. To the flag of the United States of America and to your love for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visible of liberty and justice for all.
All right. Can you tell me is on vacation or Ruth said he wouldn't be here in the morning? Were you running some free? How's your guys doing with his bags on him? Okay, first thing is the pay, approval to pay all legal bills and y'all got some things to complain with, just still hang all the bills, but this is some of the bills that didn't get paid in the last Rigger monthly meeting. Shawna from Bridget had gotten all of them, but she had had a death and a family, her mother-in-law passed away and when she left, this was only one that she'd put in the system and cut checks for, so Tuesday in the Rigger meeting, we have what remaining bills that is not on this list. I accept the motion to approve paying all the bills. Motion, Lord Earl.
Joe, we got some other bills here. Rick, ask it. Will we add that to that or put it on?
It'll depend on that. I've got it on the list and she's already got consistent that she didn't cut a check. Is this for the nameplates?
Does everything show when we first did your?
Okay, well, uh, we, again, she's got all that on there except for one of the bills that Bobby had sent and I got with him. It had some stuff that people were running a paper, two different things. And I feel the taxpayers aren't paid. Those bills for y'all are on stuff in paper, which benefits me for one thing, but...
Well, I don't think that's part of what we, we need to pay for it.
This year?
There's, there's, you see, there's nameplates, there's...
Take the church, it's small. I know the nameplates is on there.
There's a place for these pictures back here.
It was two pictures, two pictures there.
Picture there, J M, the ordinances, the people in ordinance repaction, and I'd have to list, there's several things.
If you all want to go ahead and put his stuff on the list, I mean, I don't care. And Shawna comes in and they totally give me that list. If you got, you bring a bill in, you find me and totally bring a bill in.
I've got my bills in and I've got bills there and...
But if you want to go ahead and add the British county act stuff on it, I'll give you a few, because I want it to be on, either.
I would, so much, I can march or...
Hey, yeah, I might as well be in on April bills, I know the platform that was. If you want to go ahead and make a motion, add the stuff that he brings over to me and I'll give a P O for that, I don't have a problem with that, if you don't want to wait till Tuesday. But I do know she's got, I do know she's got most of it in the system.
Two different, I mean, that's all right, yeah. Two different. Just to...
But I do know she's got some in there in the system where she didn't get the check and...
We'll just pay the fuel bill and just wait, put her thing on, she can speak on the plate because we've not had a chance with a motor.
Okay.
We just pay the fuel bill today and...
Lord Earl made a motion to pay the bills, so you're saying only bills that you want to pay? You're making a motion. Consideration, pay all the bills, it died like I said it. So you're making a motion to pay only the west bank fuel bills, right? Donnie Bush has made a motion just to pay the west's fuel bills.
Same.
Think, uh, Ray Moore, uh, Donnie Bush, Lord Earl, Ray Moore, Elton, motion carried. Okay, uh, we had kind of the last meeting that y'all had coming that, uh, you know, talking about purchasing Eagle software things, and in the meantime, since then, I had talked to some more counties and actually talked to, I want to call her Dylan, but is that your last name, Dylan?
My last name is Percy, Kathy.
Percy, Kathy, okay. When I talked to you, when Bridget got the phone, she said Kathy, I said, I don't think I remember her last name. But anyway, uh, looking at the price comparison to what we have now, physical software, the reoccurring, reoccurring bill every year, and Bridget and Kathy had talked yesterday too about the doctor paper pack thing, and she was willing to go ahead and add that system into it for thirteen thousand dollars, is that right?
Both of them together.
Okay. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna consider a motion or make a motion, go ahead and go with Eagle software. I'd just hate to spend that money and use it for months or so and not be able to get revenue back for it. So, and you all worked today on the Eagle software and I worked, but, and then it's gonna be two, two thousand dollars a year.
And it's going to give you the first year for it.
Right. So, uh, I consider a motion to go with the Eagle software. Motion, Lord Earl.
Same, sir.
Ray Moore, say it. Uh, Lord Earl. Ray Moore. Elton. Donnie Wood. Motion carried. Okay, I'll get with you and we'll try to get everything set up for her and we get everything going and be ready to go.
Uh, I have some time, I have some time today. I mean, you know, I'll sit around today, talk with your occupational, whatever, that's the court's place.
We're good, that's gonna be good. I've got a meeting at eleven, but you and Bridget can get together and Shawna and actually a few on the limit today, so she will be in today.
Well, I guess I'm fine.
Okay, next thing is, and Ruth ain't here to say anything about it, but you all got that in your package. He had to come in the day before yesterday and wanted a check where Joel Groves is, I guess, taking us to court to say he's entitled to same pay that James Turner made. Two hundred and twenty-one dollars has to be paid for him to file that. I don't know what the physical court should pay for him to carry through with the suit or if that would come underneath him. Kind of Ruth thing to be at the funeral where I left that, and I didn't really understand all I need to understand about it, but they gotta have two hundred and twenty-one dollars to file it. Do you all feel that the court should pay for him to file to take us to court to say?
I think we need to answer whether we owe it or not, you don't say? We don't know whether we owe it or not.
No, that's what I'm saying, and then you feel, I, I consider a motion to...
I don't have a problem with that.
Pay two hundred and twenty-one dollars to the judiciary system or to...
The court, any place that I know that, the court of Brendan Miller, county attorney, that he said it's pretty much a done deal. You just have to go through the process to the circuit court, you know, and over. We'd have to pay back the money, that's the way I look at it.
So I consider a motion to approve the disbursement amount of two hundred and twenty-one dollars for the necessary litigation, increase the general salary.
Motion. Say it. Don't let them know whether we really owe it or not.
All right, Ray Moore. Elton. Lord Earl. Okay, motion carried. Okay, first thing I need to do is amend this number six, it says, consideration of resolution requiring certain positions of the county personnel pursuant to KRS sixty-eight oh five. Also need to amend that for the motion personnel amendment to read additionally immediately prior to effective date would be received to further volunteer disposal, made to be paid in full within ninety days of such disposal in order to qualify for beneficial resolution. So I'll consider a motion for that. Time to look over it or want, but... And this is something that we should have had in mind, the next thing is dealing with occupational thing. Then, anybody want to make a motion or discuss it or?
I don't mind yet.
Motion to approve the county personnel. And Brendan said we used to have them, and I tried to find one and called a hundred people that worked in the previous, and a couple of them said they seen it, but nobody looked for a copy of it, so we had to start from scratch and put one together.
Make that in, let me try and figure.
No, Brendan thought it was a little bit hanging. He said he used to have a handle that he went by and, you know, just called, you know, John had this type of thing.
Copy I got, sir. John, wherever you come from.
Yeah, the job was fixed, but...
But that's a question. I'm right, fine, if you got one.
Him, Brendan could lead us on, I mean, if you don't want to look, discuss it later and look at it more, I mean, and do that, Lord Earl made a motion. Anybody want to say that motion? Okay, motion, uh, I'm gonna go ahead and say that motion. I need to get that done because that state law that we have that, Elton.
No.
Donnie Wood.
No.
Lord Earl. Rick, Lord, Ray Moore.
No.
Okay, motion paid. Okay, consideration of resolution concerning occupational and the appointment thing, residency of act of volunteer disposal. And this is, uh, we got with other counties that kind of fuss up together, and this is pretty much aligned with other counties, this is people that willing to just come in and volunteer, pay, pay their taxes, and it'll be a three year with no penalty if they're willing to come in and do that. And I consider a motion to, if y'all want to go ahead and consider a motion to approve that.
When, as they were saving, like a three-year penalty on...
Yeah, you gotta be three years, if they willing to come in and say, I don't, I'm paying, we let them pay three years with no penalty, but if not, then that's all active by the people, and they only really just volunteers, saying, hey, I don't know what it was on.
Then you got some, exactly what we're getting to.
We can't, I mean, and that's one of the things, we want to be put together, but I mean, just like, just like I owe them taxes, I come in and say, and you get a tax, and so many of them, so I'll pay any kind of that, occupy them, and I come in and say, hey, I'm, I won't pay them, they backed up three years on me, and I pay it and I'm not paying penalty. That's if I volunteer to do it, ain't too many people gonna do it, but Brendan said he bringing a lot of money in to get away from penalties, so if they don't do it, we take them to court, they have to back up five years and then play court off with penalties. It's just a volunteer struggle.
I mean, I just get some for over there.
Yeah, and we just have it in word.
Yeah, well, they're pretty much, I mean, if you read it, and if you want to wait and we get yourself together example, I mean, we can do that and...
I gotta be sure, what, if you know exactly what the moment, you know, first time, we're done.
And you can read that, it kind of, it kind of says explanatory, but I mean, we can get example here, and I say, say, oh, ten thousand dollars in back taxes and three years, I come in, pay ten thousand and then that pay on penalty. If I get brought in, if I get somebody to come, I have plus all penalty. So y'all just want to go ahead and, uh...
I just, have you want to write it up?
We just, we just pass on that and, uh...
So, so anybody that's not paying taxes, you're giving them three years.
It's like, well, I'm here coming and saying, we probably got...
Don't pay it and it's not costing them that.
And they have to pay the taxes, they get away with the penalty. Did this pay done the same thing here a couple of years ago, like with him, we were talking to Timery?
I mean, looks like that's supposed to be, we're not paying them three years. I mean, I ain't gonna pay mine, you gonna give me three years in places.
Yeah, I put mine out there.
That makes you pay it within ninety days, though. That's in...
It's what, there?
It makes you pay the, any outstanding balance, you have to pay it within ninety days, and if you don't, it's closed, then you still have to pay it. If you don't pay before, then ninety days, then you're due. So you can't just string it out forever.
I'll just give, I'll just give example, but then y'all look over it and just put back on the beginning.
You can only back up three years, just watch your sayings.
That is all he wants.
Okay, I've seen what you're saying.
Okay, so wait, we're talking three years. But we want to be able to get a couple of years. Okay, next thing is consideration and approval of purchase sideboards for the red and green road department. I don't know about you all, but I am living a whole lot of sleep, people think that's the best time to call, I guess, to get a hold of me, the eleven or twelve, to tell me that your weed being good, but, and it is dangerous, I mean, that's the biggest thing, the safety part of it, and for the longest time, we had one more went down, and we've got them both up running now, and yesterday they were in, on Highway thirty west, yesterday evening, they end up in, uh, Joe four four over frozen, actually next week Monday, I need to take them to the River Painty and a couple places over there. We just ran all the lights, tried to get the worst, I mean, we got, they curled in and touching each other. I know they got a bid process, but I talked to two and three and I talked to state bidders, I'm having the hardest time, it wasn't getting bids, I did get one bid from Meat Tractor, but they wanted a, they're tomorrow on a big old tractor, we really don't need a brute tractor, but we need something with just a sideboard where we can lay that down and go, you can get model room done, definitely, but these two is not designed to cut pace, and they're made more for Bush and Bruce, and I did get a price yesterday, this guy that's from Cabota, he's actually a state bidder, but his Tennessee is his district, but it takes in its part of Kentucky. Hang on, he'll front me, but it was eighty-one, six thirty-seven or something like that, and this is a state price, and he don't want to have to sit down and talk to you, so it's almost like a reverse bidding that we follow under and we can, and don't hold each other. I think we can do it in payments. But, and then another price I got from me with a bigger tractor, around seven, I thought I'd work back yesterday, and he'd go and try to get me something last night, I did put fifty M in this one, but really like to buy a walkover, we can get the same town price as the state matter given, and buy it from all work, that's just me personally. I mean, if you need parts, I mean, twenty minutes, we go there and get it.
I'll tell you that.
And if we went from John Lear, I mean, I think we'd rather deal with somebody like me that's walkover.
That one, the walkover tractor, we had a war with basically, and I'm not saying that's how we do it.
And, and, I mean, I'd give you prices, if y'all look and say we already got this one or whatever, I think we need a...
They got one that's a little over something, just for...
That's good for grass, I got that, I do a price that, if you hit Bush's eighty-two, he said he goes to burn that even the carrier, he said they so many more parts that can go bad, he said the bush on the lane just laid on, he said he just got, he just got a radical up to two miles, and he said, we did three forty trees, he said, you get a piece of steel with a trail mower? And he said, it's, he said, it's bust to hook. Now, if you're around Holland, if they're making gold for trail mowers, I don't, it don't throw anything out the road or it's safe or something, but I don't think that'll help with their roads that we've got, we've got so much steel around, and come on ticking out the foot, and a bit of new gonna be in time.
You had your extra street place to put on that, you know, get the, like, lot, so they actually could put on a tractor or you going like that?
Yeah, you, you was talking, they figured about doing the car, I see, but, you know, my head, and I just, we just need something smaller where we just lay it down and get the holler, turn it, do a road or like that, you know, we don't need a, they kind of recommended the eighty-seven and ninety-four, but, uh, he goes, he doesn't, I mean, Lord Earl, didn't he, that's a, that's a great tractor.
Correct, yeah.
And they had a sixty-five and seventy-five there, I think what we need, but he says you couldn't, for the John Derry, he said you couldn't get the sideboard, he had put one behind it, like now, and you in that kind of hand, except the old roads we got done, you know, most of the...
They, they want to try those, right, they're, they need them.
So I just, consideration and approval to get the pricing on this thing and purchase this thing through the road and horse tractor, we should, and I talked to you, and we got a guy that actually put his price in to bid to cut road, but I think we need to kind of sit down and draw a contract up with him on that plane and make sure the thing's due to clear in case somebody gets hurt or something like that to him or that. But I got about three or four people that have prices, I can't wait this far to get a price to sell something, but if it's been cooked, that's worth enough, two weeks.
Hey, Joe, another thing, they passed the law, I think, was get ready to pass, bring it on roadways, grass, et cetera, and long, you're gonna have to come up some way to get that option.
I got, I got even a lady to cut your grass somewhere on other county, a motorcycle that I know.
It's, I think, you know, our B M country.
I don't know, I think, I think, uh, we've got a...
That's about what I'm saying. So I, consideration of motion, motion to approve the purchase in one of these, and before we do that, I'll get you a price and we'll get you every kind of looks like, I think, fifty, a hundred, a hundred and fifty.
Motion, second.
Motion, Elton, did you say that, Tony? Elton?
Uh.
Donnie Wood.
Uh.
Lord Earl.
Uh.
Ray Moore.
Uh.
Motion carried. Okay, first reading of the budget. I don't know if y'all got a change of work on what you've got, you've got the budget in, Robert Brown actually called him a ten year before the meeting, and I told him that y'all had one together, and I told him the revenue, the revenue part was seven million one hundred and twenty-eight dollars, twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and twenty-three dollars, and the procreation was five million five hundred and fifty-six dollars and eighty-three cents. He said time was a mess, and he said, y'all haven't done a thing, we can't do a second reading by July, but he said that y'all wanted to go ahead and vote on this, as the meeting he would, uh, do the changes and try to get a valid budget so where we can, then he said we would have to have emergency meeting, we're gonna post it in the paper about the state of breeding, and he said we can, we can have this building away, call emergency meeting and pass it on. I don't know if y'all had a change to discuss, if y'all want to discuss it or?
Yeah, if you're on, on revenue, my item, zero one, four nine nine, transferred to other funds, L G A, L G D A.
Okay, wait, that's what, what did you say, was on any?
It's on the revenues, revenue's over one forty-nine on that.
Okay.
That, that figure, seven hundred and eighty-six thousand four hundred and twenty dollars, that should be in the negative, and I think that's worth, if you take that out, that's the difference in the five million, it should, it should balance.
And if you take seven hundred and eighty-six thousand out of seven million versus five million?
It's doubled, yeah, it's doubled. You have to, where it's positive, and that's the revenue transferred out, it has to be negative.
Oh, okay, so if it's been negative, it's positive, it would be a hundred, one million or something?
We figure it can take the seven eighty-six four twenty and times it by two, subtract one on what you got, you get five fifty-six or eighty-three, or five fifty-six or eighty-three.
Okay, I made that change on this, and if you all want to go ahead and make a motion to approve the first reading on this, you did sign and send it?
We can't get that sent today, I mean, for Shawna's...
I don't know, I did think about Palmer this morning, she, I thought when we had it, you did it this morning, I'm gonna see if she can have it this morning and do it. Uh, I think it's a matter, we can just make the changes on this paper, and I'll meet it back on the backboard, and I'll sign it, I'll just tell them that it should have been negative, so I'll take that out, and he'll balance it, same way on the one, the first reading we had on the one that I sent, he may have done the changes on it to make it. Something with all this, it couldn't be in this line, so...
I think it's got the most charges to get or to get it to form and all that.
And he pretty much said go into the first reading, if y'all basically send it in to him, he just, so I'm gonna do it, and send it in and, uh, signing it, send it today, if y'all want to go ahead and make a motion to approve the first reading. Y'all want to go through the line out of a line item or, don't really need to do. So I consider a motion to approve, or approve the first reading of the budget. With the men, with the men in the over one forty-nine on that to be in the negative, seven hundred and eighty-six thousand four hundred and twenty dollars.
Same.
And ten of the four. Who made that motion?
Yours.
And then one, Donnie Wood.
Uh.
Ray Moore.
Uh.
Elton.
Uh.
And I will play out, so I'll get that signed, say it in. I'll do that.
Go back.
It just got from China, you got it to Latin America, but I mean, yeah. But, motion carried, so I'll get this signed, this thing in the plate, consider motion to adjourn.
We need to go for the last one.
No, I mean, if you want to go without going out, I mean, I'm sure going out if you want to.
Yeah.
If you want to do that.
If you like that one, then, or...
Okay, if I, I mean, if we're gonna get another, uh, make it quicker, okay, on one, in our question, and then, revenue, something broken. Okay, right here, this, this has never been in the budget, anyway, last, last administration and this administration, you've gone on here, physical court, uh, legal fees, twenty-five thousand dollars. Give me a brief on what that was consistent or what it was covered, on that.
The way it's been going there. This, this first six months, look like we're gonna have an attorney. That's the reason we put it in.
Person, the county attorney you got, right?
Uh.
Not usually county attorney you got, but you said hard county attorney.
We're usually, but we're not getting no work, you know, sometimes.
But again, again, I think a lot of this stuff, until it be in counties, county thing, I think it's on the first one thing, and I don't think the citizens of the county or the, the lawyers, they get a lawyer, or we're placing a bill lawyer to take it.
But we're going by the law, we're shifting, and we're still not getting no work.
Let's put it this way, that money's in that line item, if we don't ever use it, it's still gonna be in that line item.
I understand it, they give you, they give you the right to, Bridget, to come in here and vote to use it.
Well, that's, that's what...
Again, you've got the citizens of the county, taxpayers, taking your own...
Just kind of what they do all the time.
So, so if you're doing that, we pay...
I ain't there, I don't mean that.
You might need one.
We, we pay this.
I don't think taxpayer law would pay my lawyer, I tell you that right there.
And that, and that's my, that's my, that's my real thing, I mean, if we got different duties, uh...
Like I said, if we don't have to ever use the money, then it's, it's still there.
Again, I think if y'all feel that way, for Brendan, we pay Brendan thirty-one thousand dollars a year, maybe if y'all want to feel that way, I don't think we were to pay two attorneys.
That's a possibility, but all Brendan does is advance, we don't get no work, all he does is advance.
I'll, I'll, I'll let, I'll let right now this budget go.
Okay, wait, no, y'all got it, y'all got it in there, you got to vote to pass it, I'm just telling you what I don't agree with, so, so, another thing, uh... Physical course travel and training, since I've been in there, I have my turn, one bill in for no motel, no reservation, and again, the way we're getting along and the way the county's going, y'all got ten thousand dollars in there to pay that, I think if we choose to go with this training, then we need to be responsible for the bill, I don't think the taxpayer law to pay it, I do think it's valuable, a learning experience, and then you, and, and again, I know you get more accomplished out in the hallways than you do in the meetings sometime, because the meeting is pretty much over and over again, but you get a chance to talk to other people, but again, there's another thing I don't agree with, putting ten thousand, and again, that, that's under the judge's discretion to provide for you to do that, but I mean, there was another thing that I didn't, there was another thing that I didn't agree with.
KRS, I can't quote you the number, but they are a KRS that clearly states, if you participate in the senior program or training program, it must be funded.
It must be funded to pay... It must be funded to pay for the forty-year training that you get. Last year, y'all spent a total of thirty-two thousand dollars going to get trained in the conferences. And then turn around, forty-four hundred dollars a piece for going to the training. Again, you get forty-four hundred dollars for going to the training, and you pay your way, you still wanna be able to pay your rest, uh, restoration.
With your way to some thousand a year, do you, do you get to the city, do you participate in the city program and get that paid?
Uh, y'all signed up for it, but I pay, I have not charged a hotel bill, and I have not charged, uh, one registration bill to the county I want. I think that's left for me to go get the training, and if I get forty-four hundred dollars a year for going, that'll cover my hotel room, and my gas, and my heating, and... But I understand what I don't agree with, I mean, y'all gained the budget, and you got to vote to pass it, but that was another thing. Uh, another thing, uh, county tre, county treasures, training benefit. Uh, y'all got eleven hundred dollars in there. This training only pertains to the official, according to KRS. So, uh, that was another thing I didn't agree with.
You have to show them the KRS.
Uh?
Uh, I need to see the KRS.
Hmm. Uh, let's see, uh...
The, the, the premium, the...
Another thing, pardon me.
They started to get that.
I didn't ask for it. She did before, we should have tried, but she has something last year.
John Lish and Vice Budge, we wish her five thousand dollars for her training.
Does she go do it?
I don't think she...
She did, she did, uh, right.
Last, last year.
But again, again, uh, I'm just telling you what I don't agree with on it, uh... Another thing here, we had forty-eight hundred dollars budgeted for, uh, uh, minutes and video of a thing, and, uh, uh... Whoever took the minutes got three hundred dollars a month, and whoever done the video got a hundred dollars a month. And you all have budgeted, uh, seventy-two hundred dollars in it, uh, and that comes down to three hundred dollars a piece. I just, I'm just gonna say, when Chris takes minutes, he doesn't have to do a lot of recording, and he did it all done, and he posted, and, uh, uh, that's something else that I didn't agree with.
We felt like that, uh, cameras should receive the same pay, but I was, it's a lot of records under that, too.
Okay, I, I want, uh, I think it was something, but I just, uh... Let's see, on the corner. Okay, the corner salary last year was thirty-two thousand, five hundred dollars. Y'all have voted into thirty-six thousand, eight hundred dollars. Uh, but on the deputy corner, it was from eight thousand dollars, deputy corners, four, up to thirty-four thousand dollars.
I think that the KRS on that, too, wants to receive the training.
Okay, I need to pay, I need to pay.
Yeah.
Is that something that we need to do before July first, uh, or should have been done before May fifteenth, or May nineteenth?
I think, Lord, I mean, hopefully, one day to pay, uh, to pay ours the same thing we pay yours, if I can remember.
Yeah, thirty-two thousand dollars.
No, secret's from that.
No.
Well, I would say...
Anyway, that's...
You, you run fifty minutes in.
Okay, that's another, another thing, going from eight thousand dollars for deputy corner.
What did Joe make?
Left weight to the surface quarter back.
Well, okay.
But you did make a motion on it.
I made a motion, paying the same thing you're paying yours.
Well, that's sixty thousand.
You ain't paying yours on sixty thousand.
You did?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, anyway, that, that was another thing, I mean, but, but the deputy corner parts, going from eight thousand dollars to, uh, support up to thirty-four thousand dollars. Where are you gonna get the money to do it, then?
What was it?
Where the revenue been? Hold over fifty, twenty, fifty, twenty, four hundred and fifty.
I think we've done pretty good, Judders, but here it is, the last month of, of the fifth year, it's going. With the change, the cuts we've made, the fact that we don't, what do we owe, Judders?
Yeah, I, I'm not, I'm not complaining about what we owe and how we're doing, I think, the way, the way they've been, been, uh, it's been productive.
Lot better shape and lock in, Judders, like...
I'm, I'm not saying it, I'm just saying, have you really figured where you can go from eight thousand dollars to support up to thirty-four thousand dollars? That's twenty-two thousand dollars, and you figure, but, but anyway, um, that, that's another thing, uh... Animal control, we only, we only animal control for about nineteen dollars in there. Uh, we have forty-one thousand dollars budgeted in either the things for the last five years, and you ought to cut it down to twenty thousand, five hundred dollars. Uh, how, how are you gonna pay, are you planning on cutting, uh, doing away with it after six months, or get somebody else in mind that, that makes less, or... How, how can we pay a forty-one thousand dollar, uh, uh, air be paid with twenty thousand, five hundred dollars, pretty certain you...
We should put your...
Have a, or you win, or you don't get it?
That's gonna have a wrong fund, right?
So you, you, you budgeted another twenty thousand, five hundred in rug funds to cover, or just pay it?
Yeah. Or it could be like, um, keep, keep it...
Do you, now, his, his fund comes out of the same kind of fund, and it, and it comes out, or it come out of all two.
They're basically there the same way.
That was another thing, uh... Uh, on phone bill, Lower County Drive, let me see where that's at. We got thirteen employees to get thirty dollars a month. Uh, you take thirty times twelve is, uh, three hundred sixty dollars by thirteen, and you all have got it down to two thousand dollars, I think, for y'all may have to be trying it. But I mean, that's when justice, we go back into me, and I mean, I didn't know if y'all realized that, or...
We took out, uh...
Do you want now?
I think you had budgeted, uh, twenty-eight thousand for nine one one coordinator.
Hmm.
You had budgeted forty-two five for the financial officer, and you had budgeted fifty-five hundred for the health coordinator.
Let's see, then we won't go beyond that when you come over to me.
That's what you had, what we take, we, we took out. Which Crystal was doing the three positions for forty-one five.
Okay.
The way we figured it, the way you had it, which, we've been paying that seventy-six thousand, so it's been a thirty-five thousand dollar increase, but we took it out.
Okay, yeah, I want, I want you to change it to eleven, that, um... Uh, the finality office, the wish, you got it to eleven thousand, and, uh, what was it, ten thousand, is that right? Uh, health insurance coordinator? Yeah. Fifty, forty-five, one oh six, county finality officer, eleven thousand, and interim health coordinator was ten thousand. Uh, let's see... Uh, seventy-one. Uh, on my report, I had forty-two five for a finality officer, and fifty-five, fifty-five hundred dollars for a health insurance coordinator, so... You all, combined with both of them being twenty-one, these here was forty-seven. So what are you coming up with, uh?
We have Russian forty-two five.
So that's a difference of twenty-six thousand.
For fifty-five, and then you had, which made twenty-eight thousand for, for two positions. And Crystal was doing it for forty-one, but you also had another twenty-eight thousand for nine one one. In, in your, in your proposed budget, which would have come to a total of seventy-six thousand dollars.
On, on the nine one one, I mean, y'all cut the proposal, what I had proposed.
Right, I'm just saying what you had proposed, which is seventy-six thousand.
Another question, if you're doing the nine one one, all in making, I ain't gonna say the map, 'cause I don't want you making it there, but...
Nineteen ninety-three.
Nineteen ninety, if you make it nineteen ninety-three, y'all gonna have enough figured in the, uh, nine one one, because y'all actually cut it. So you're saying you got it figured in the road funds to cover it's nine one one position, is that what you're saying?
I'm saying we take thirty-five thousand dollars on your proposal, by, by taking, by positioning the way that Chris did.
Okay. Do you want, y'all have to cut it down to twenty thousand, five hundred, and I had it up to... The budget that I submitted, you all had twenty-eight thousand dollars, y'all had.
Right.
And that's what it was last year, and the year before that, and the year before that, and the year before that, but y'all cut it down to twenty thousand, five hundred. When I said, why don't you cut seventy-five hundred dollars out of the coordinator position?
I have a per position, Jeff, they have funded the general fund, and half, and the nice, exactly half. And our health insurance is in the general fund.
And that's another thing on his health insurance, too, you all have zero, some of that, you have zero down. And the same way on our cell phone, y'all got thirty, thirty dollars a month, at twelve is three sixty. But again, I mean, that can be amended, but I mean, I don't want, I, I think it was the same way in the county road department. Y'all remember what y'all budgeted for phone, for, for over there? You guys are here, what's your name?
The road department?
Yeah.
Look at that, huh?
Okay, thirteen employees, if you take a three sixty, thirteen, you can't, you can't go work on the panel for that. But that's just, I mean, that, that can be amended, but I mean, that was pretty much what I had planned. And that's the reason why we're laying, I mean, that's, that's all the changes out there. But I accept the law, and do it during the meeting.
Oh.
I'm going there, and see.
Say.
Anybody else go here?
Aye.
Ray Moore?
Aye.
Elton Kinger?
Aye.
Uh, see, let me get you more to sign, I think we... I have your chart to sign.
Same deal.